... members can come work on their own projects. Watch for more videos to keep you up to date on how the Starkey Ranch Theater Library Cultural Center is progressing. Thank you.
One day, we are going to have a captain of a Stanley Cup champion who came right out of Pasco County will be holding up this trophy because it started with one of these rinks here.
So today, we're here at J.Ban Rec Complex in Holiday, celebrating the opening of two street hockey rinks that were built in a partnership with the Lightning Foundation, the Tampa Bay Lightning. The other facility is located at the district park over in Westu Chapel.
Over five years ago, we, with the NHL and the NHLPA, we came together and created the Industry Growth Fund. The purpose of the Industry Growth Fund was to simply grow the game of hockey. We applied to have 10 outdoor rinks in different areas, Pasco County, Pinellas, Hillsborough, Downey, Manatee, Polk.
When they mentioned that they were going to put one in, knowing how large our county and how much need that we have here, I asked them if they would be kind enough to put in two.
For us to have a ribbon cutting here and have two rinks in Pasco County, we're super, super excited.
When the Lightning approached us, the idea was that we would provide the property for the facility. We were to construct the pads that the rinks themselves would go on, and through the agreement, the Lightning Foundation was responsible for building the actual infrastructure itself on top of the pad. And then from there, again, it'd be a coordinated effort. With league play, they provide all of the equipment initially in terms of the sticks and whatnot to start the initial league with also a series of clinics. And then really kind of to just get the program rolling, at which point then the Parks Team would assume overseeing the league play from that point on.
You know what? The favorite part is that they're all different. So they have different nuances, different paint jobs, different things that you look forward to that are unique to each.
So we're going to have a combination of free play, obviously open to the public. And then in coordination with the Lightning, we will be working on actual league play where we can create some structured programming depending on season.
As we know, having kids, giving them an activity, something to do, is a great thing. This place will be loaded with kids every night.
I love Pasco County. There's a ton of Lightning fans in Pasco County, and there's a ton of engaged kids as well.
It's just one more wonderful thing that we're bringing to Pasco County to give our residents a really high quality of life.
This is a message to anyone who is pimping, selling, or sexually exploiting someone in Pasco County.
If you are forcing someone to sell their body for drugs or money, or if you are giving them drugs in exchange for sexual favors.
If you are allowing a minor to stay in your house in return for sexual favors.
Or if you're setting up sexual dates with a child.
If you are pimping, providing a ride or security for someone selling their bodies for sex, or acting as a manager and keeping all of their money.
The law considers you a human trafficker, and human trafficking is a felony. You could be sentenced to 30 years to life.
Every law enforcement agency in Pasco County, including the Pasco Sheriff's Office.
The New Port Ritchie Police Department.
The Zephyr Hills Police Department.
The Dade City Police Department.
And the Port Ritchie Police Department.
Are working to arrest and help prosecute human traffickers. Pasco County has zero tolerance for human trafficking.
If you take advantage of others, forcing them to work or engage in commercial sex acts, we have a special place for you to live, the Pasco County Jail.
If you exploit or traffic other people, you are participating in modern-day slavery.
Would you want someone to sell a member of your family for sex?
Is a life in prison worth it? Because eventually, you will get caught.
We use state-of-the-art technology.
We have highly trained, experienced officers.
We leverage detailed intelligence and monitor all of the online and social media platforms that traffickers use.
All law enforcement is working together. If you are a trafficker in Pasco County, we're looking for you, and we will find you.
Pasco doesn't buy it. Don't traffic or sell another person, or you will be arrested.
Hi, I'm Angelo Laurento, Regional Manager at the New River Library. We're putting on the final touches at your favorite branch. There are lots of changes inside and out, starting with the parking. As you know, we've moved the entrance drive to the east side of the building, and on your way to the parking lot, you pass a book return kiosk undercover from the elements to keep you nice and dry when you're just dropping off a book. We've added new landscaping to the entrance and a bright new sign to keep you informed of events and happenings at the library at a glance. Inside, the flooring is complete, along with the ceilings and lighting. An expansive new front desk is the hub of the library, with friendly staff ready to assist you quickly and efficiently. The furniture, shelves, and fixtures are in place, and we're preparing to deliver the books to the branch soon. The Discovery Gardens at New River are the gem of the library. We'll have a variety of display gardens, sensory features, and of course, garden beds for your use. We've also installed a covered area for holding seminars and demonstrations. We know you're anxious to enjoy the remodeled New River Library, and we're eager to show it off. Follow our social media pages and pascolibraries.org for updates and for the opening date. Thank you.
Denise? You okay? Is that it go? Him? Everybody?
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right. Okay, so we'll call the meeting to order. And if we could stand for a moment of silence and the pleasure allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, so I'd like to welcome everybody to this afternoon. Can you hear me? Everybody hear me back there? Okay. If we could have the roll call. Madam Secretary.
Jamie Girardi.
Here.
Don Anderson.
Here.
Peter Hansel.
Here.
Roberta Sais.
Here.
Christopher Poole.
Chris Williams.
Here.
Chairman Charles Gray.
Here.
And the proof of publication, please.
The items were advertised in the Tampa Bay Times on January 5, 2022, January 19, 2022, January 26, 2022, and February 2, 2022.
All right, thank you very much. I think we have minutes to approve.
I make a motion to approve the minutes from the January 6 and January 20, 2022 meetings.
I'll second that.
I have a motion and a second to approve the minutes. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. Motion carries. Okay, again, welcome everybody today. The Planning Commission is appointed by the county commissioners, and we meet twice monthly. We serve as a local planning agency, and we hold public hearings and transmit to the Board of County Commissioners recommendations on comprehensive plan amendments, land development code amendments, rezonings, and conditional use requests. The Planning Commission is the final decision-making body for special exceptions, certain appeals, variance requests, and certain alternative standard requests. However, final decisions may be appealed to the Board of County Commissioners. If anyone is in opposition to any comprehensive plan amendment, land development code amendment, rezoning, conditional use, or any item where the Planning Commission transmits a recommendation to the Board of County Commissioners, it's important for you to attend the appropriate Board of County Commissioner meeting, which would follow this meeting. We have the dates available if you're interested. For those of you who are not familiar with the procedures, and for those of you who are, I'm going to repeat them again. We have three sections. We have continuances. Continuances are usually items where the staff or the applicant has requested continuance for any number of reasons, and unless there are unusual circumstances, it's been our custom to accept those requests for continuance. We have a consent agenda, and those items are items where the applicant and the county have not received any objections by letter, or by phone, or in person. And those go on a consent agenda. We'll go through those items one at a time. If there's anyone here who wants to hear a consent agenda item, raise your hand when we call it out, and we'll pull it from consent for discussion and put it on the regular items. And that's the third category, the regular items, which will all be heard and talked about today. And the applicant will be heard, and the respondents will have an opportunity to ask The applicants will have three minutes to make their presentation, and the respondents will have three minutes. The applicants will also have time to rebut. I don't think there's been any requests for extra time in writing, correct?
That's correct, Mr. Chair.
Okay, thank you. So one last note here before we start is your phones. If you have phones, just try to make sure they're in a silent position so we don't disturb anybody when they're speaking. And I don't guess anybody has beepers anymore? I don't think, I've never seen one recently. So before we start the regular meeting, we're open to the meeting for a public comment on anything that's not on today's agenda. Is there anyone here to speak on anything that is not on today's agenda? Having seen no one.
Mr. Chair, we do have someone signed up to speak for something that's not on the agenda, Margot Robison.
Okay. Is she on the phone right now?
She is here presently.
Oh, she's here presently, okay. Come forward, please, and state your name and address, and we'll swear everybody at once, as a matter of fact.
My name's Marg-
Hold on one second.
My name's Margot.
We're going to swear everybody at the same time. So before you do that, anybody who plans to give testimony today or to come up and speak, please stand and raise your right hand. Be sworn, including you. Raise your right hand. Raise your right hand. Okay.
I'm hard of hearing, so.
That's okay.
And I don't think the speakers are really loud, so.
Okay, we'll try to speak up, then.
Okay. My name's Margot Robison. I live at 5929 East Lake Drive in Newport Ritchie. I've been here 25 years. And we used to drive out 54. You know what it looked like, all the way to 75. It was beautiful, pristine, gorgeous land. Now, I can't even drive out there. It just makes me sick to my stomach. It's completely bulldozed. All the trees are gone, all the cows are gone. It's just development after development after development. It's not what us Pasco County residents signed up for. And I don't want to move. I don't want to, you know, I'm like hundreds of other people that live here. We're just driving around every day, looking at all these new developments, just getting sick to our stomach. You go down Massachusetts, they bulldoze old growth, beautiful 200-foot pines to put in a damn storage development. It's just unending, okay? As you drive around, you obviously know how it looks, and it's not looking good. So we have a few pieces in Pasco, a few parcels left that are pristine. We have a few trees left. I just beg you to leave them and don't bulldoze them. I know on a planned unit development, how the requirements are when they do the engineering, and they sit down, and these engineers sit at their computer, and they click, click, click. Here comes a bulldozer, clear cuts the whole parcel, boom, all the trees are gone. This has to stop. If, you know, there's other developments in California and other places in the country that preserve the trees while they're building these houses. It can be done. It's just the engineering has to change. I'm just begging you to please think about the overall feel of the community when you're approving a development, that it has trees, that it has nature, not the kind they bring in from out of state and plant, but the ones that are already here. It's very important that we preserve the Florida nature, and we're not doing that. And it's hurting the community, it's hurting the people that have lived here forever and ever. And I just beg you to please consider those things when you approve future developments. Okay?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yep. Any questions or comments? No, I just, just from my perspective, one of the things I do agree with you about is that we have to do more about not clearcutting our woodlands and so forth. A lot of the property that you saw out on 54 never had any trees. It was all cattle land and cypress trees. So they were just pastures. So that, you know, I don't think we can blame the developers for that. So, you know, I sympathize with what you're saying, but we, you know, we have to be mindful of the fact that, you know, we can't just stop progress. We can manage progress, that's all. And that's what we'll try to do. And I will always be mindful of the clearcutting and the cutting down of the trees and so forth. I think for me, and I'm sure for other people on this board, I'm sure that's very important. Anybody have any comments? No? Okay, so I can, we can move into the regular part of the meeting, I think.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair, Planning Commission members. Denise Hernandez, Planning and Development. The first item, PC 3, is PDD 227587. We ask that you pull that from the consent, because we do have someone who has signed up to speak on that item.
All right. And that is PC 3, did you say?
That's correct.
Okay.
So I'm going to move on to the following item, PC 4, PDD 220020. On this item, you're sitting as the local planning agency. It's a comprehensive plan amendment. It is CPAL 21-2125 for Cross Park PD. It's providing for a comprehensive plan text amendment to subarea policy flu 7.1.17, Cross Park PD. I do want to let you know that there's a couple of corrections on that. On page one of your agenda, under project address, that should be at Henley and 54. And then under page two, under policy flu 7.1.17, it's actually 10,000 square feet of commercial, of retail and development. And also, there is a correction to the number of multifamily units. Your memo says 240, it's really 280. So those are two corrections that I just wanted to read into record on that one. So we're asking that you find that one consistent with the Pasco County Comprehensive Plan and recommend approval to the Board of County Commissioners.
Mr. Chair, can I ask that that be pulled as some questions?
Yes, absolutely. So that one will be pulled?
Okay, we're going to move on to item PC 5, PDD 220206. This is a small-scale comprehensive plan amendment. On this one, you're also sitting as a local planning agency, CPAS 2203, SR 52 Swedberg. It's for a small-scale comprehensive plan amendment to the future land use maps, map 2-15, and sheet 11 from RES 6 residential, six dwelling units per gross acre to comm commercial on approximately 2.51 acres of real property located at the intersection of State Route 52 and Faithful Way. We're asking that you find that consistent with the Pasco County Comprehensive Plan and recommend approval to the Board of County Commissioners.
Okay. Anything up here? Anyone here to speak on this one? Okay.
Item PC 6 is PDD 220207. Again, you're sitting as the local planning agency on this item. It's a small-scale comprehensive plan amendment, CPAS 2205, SR 52 West Pasco. This is for a small-scale comprehensive plan amendment to the future land use maps, 2-15 and sheet 11 from RES 6 residential, six dwelling units per gross acre to comm commercial on approximately 3.27 acres of real property located south of State Route 52 and west of Moon Lake Road. We're asking that you find this consistent with the Pasco County-
with the Pasco County Comprehensive Plan and recommend approval to the Board of County Commissioners.
All right. Anyone here to speak on this one? See no one?
Following item is PC 7, PDD 220068. Still sitting as a local planning agency, a large-scale comprehensive plan amendment, CPAL 2124, Denton Avenue. This provides for a small-scale comprehensive plan amendment to the future land use map, map 2-15 and sheet 4, changing from IL industrial light, RES 6, RES 6 residential, six dwelling units per gross acre, and RES 3 residential, three dwelling units per gross acre to PD plan development on approximately 331.4 acres of real property located at the southwest corner of Denton Avenue and Mattis Road, and a text amendment creating subarea policy flu 7.1.61 Denton Avenue, and a map amendment to the future land use map 2-9, adding subarea map 2-961 Denton Avenue. We're asking that you find this consistent with the Pasco County Comprehensive Plan and recommend approval to the Board of County Commissioners.
All right, anybody to speak on PC 7? See no one?
Following item is PC 8. I did send a revision on Monday to the Planning Commission members and to the Clerk's office on this item, PDD 220053. Again, you're still sitting as a local planning agency on this item. It is a large-scale comprehensive plan amendment, CPAL 21-15 Gateway Hub. It's a large-scale comprehensive plan amendment to the future land use element, appendix to the Gateway Hub future land use classification, and the future land use maps, map 2-9, subarea policy, subarea map, sorry, 2-9 Gateway Hub subcategory, subarea map 2-9 Gateway Hub subcategories. The correction was just the, on the next-to-last page of your agenda, it just add, added additional future land uses on the appendix. And we're asking that you find this consistent with the Pasco County Comprehensive Plan and recommend approval to the Board of County Commissioners.
All right, anyone to speak on this one?
Well, I just have a question, but I, I mean, it's probably something staff- Yeah, just pull it, because I, just so I can ask my question.
We're pulling PC 9? I'm sorry, PC 8?
PC 8, right.
That is the end of your consent agenda. The following item is a Land Development Code Amendment. I believe there's a presentation on that item. So, that's the end of the consent agenda. So, that would leave PC 5, PC 6, PC 7 on the consent.
All right, can I have a motion to approve the consent agenda as amended?
Motion to approve, second.
A motion and a second? Any further discussion on the motion? If not, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign?
Mr. Chair, how would you like to handle this? Do you want to do the-
Let's go back to the PC 4.
Go back to PC 3.
PC 4 may take longer. I'd rather ask the question.
Oh, you would, okay.
The PC 8 question is probably going to be very quick.
All right, let's do that first.
I just, my question is simply, are they reducing the employment acreage or entitlements at all in this project? It doesn't appear they are, but I just want somebody to confirm that.
You're the chosen one.
Mr. Chairman, Clark Hobby, Hobby &amp; Hobby, PA 109 North Broad Street, Tampa, Florida. No, we are not. All we're doing is, there was a large swath of multifamily that ran through the middle of the site, and we're simply taking that out and attributing that land to Single Family 3, to the north of the wetland, and to the Community Mixed Use 9, to the south. So, it doesn't affect, it does not affect, for instance, David, the interstate mixed-use area or the office commercial area that's over by the interstate.
All those acreages and entitlements?
That's not affected in any way.
That was my only question, thank you. I'm fine with you moving forward on that one.
Okay. Do we have a motion to approve PC 8?
Motion to approve, second.
Okay. Any further discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign?
Mr. Chair, do you want us to go back to PC 3, or do you want to do the Land Development Code item?
Let's go PC 9. Is that, that's where we are now? Is that right? Yeah?
Yes.
That way, we can go back to the other one that David wanted to talk about after. Is that an idea?
Yes.
While we're waiting, my name is Ernie Monaco. I'm the Special Districts Manager, many of you know me already, for Villages of Pasadena Hills and Connected City. In PC 9, I wanted to replace a chart. It's a sample chart that goes Land Development Code. There was a missing column. Yeah, column has been found. So, I'd like to submit as a replacement.
All right, we have motion to receive and file?
Motion to receive and file, second.
Motion and second, all in favor? Aye, opposed, motion carries.
This replaces page 164 in your packet.
Okay.
And I'll explain what this chart is as I- I'll just give you a little bit of a background. Let me read the ordinance, because it's important to hear it as well. An ordinance by the Pasco County Board of County Commissioners amending the Pasco County Land Development Code, Chapter 600, overlaying Special District Areas, Section 602.8M3, the Village of Pasadena Hills, impact fees, mobility fees, development fees, search, development fee surcharges, and VOPH transportation development fee schedules in Exhibit 602-3. A little bit of background, back in October 2020, Bill Oliver, who is the consultant the BCC hired to update the mobility fee schedules. He does this, the schedules have to be updated every three years. The county has actually approved the countywide changes already that Bill has already produced, and they were approved last September. Bill is in the audience, and he can answer very specific detailed questions if you have that. You have a copy of the mobility fees themselves for VOPH back here in the back of your packet. Anyway, when he was doing the countywide update, he had discovered that there were some text chart and fee schedule revisions that needed to take place, that we needed to improve the clarification for the people that are implementing the, implementing the actual fees themselves. So, that was the text amendments, which I can quickly go over. And then, there was a chart, which you have in your hands now, which will replace the old chart. And then, there are actual fee schedule revisions, which are really about surcharge percentages and any ancillary use, land use, which is residential use that needed to be inserted as well. What had happened was, there was really a lot of people involved in this. It was height design, it was Bill, it was the Planning and Development Department, and it was David as well. So, all of us had worked on this and feel comfortable about it now. Let me see if there's a clicker, or no. So, really, in essence, I've summarized the text changes. External fees, you know, as you know, the external roadway fees is really 20% of mobility fees. Plus, you've got bike-ped portions, plus 20% of surcharges. The external road account, this is a name change. We're calling it the VOPH Fund, External Roads. A lot of the issues really became with the implementation in our accounting group. The titles need to be a little more accurate, a little more clear to help them put the money and the credits into the right categories and pots, basically. And then, the VOPH Fund is 88% of internal roadway plus 12% alternative transportation modes. The transportation modes are those golf cart tracks, or paths, as an example. And then, there were sample table and table notes to add the 2022 changes to present the impacts of the updated fees. Excuse me, all right, there it is. I wish I could see that, wait, what did I do? Okay, I wish I could blow that up more. But you have it in your packet. And basically, what is, you can see, there's one line item that says ancillary uses that was added. That was on the top one of that chart. And the difference in the chart here shows you the actual changes in the surcharge percentage, and it's really predominantly focusing on the multifamily products. We need those to be consistent with the policies of the BCC. At the same time, it had to be consistent with how we, we give incentives for preferred development types. So, for example, conventional versus modern versus TOD versus TND. You want to encourage, we encourage certain uses by actually reducing the surcharge percentage. So, you'll see that in that column there. So, the end result is basically what you see in this huge packet of fees for VOPH for years 2022, 2023, 2024, and 2025. What else can I say about this? I'll introduce Bill. If he wants to come up and listen, he's the author of this. If you want to say anything, or? David may want to add something to this. Oh, the VOPH approved this last, yesterday. They approved the recommendation of the BCC to-
Ernie said a lot of words, but the short version of this is the county is just trying to make the VOPH fees match what we already do countywide in terms of the mobility fees. And there were some of the surcharges that didn't make sense. So, for example, we had a 15% surcharge on condominiums, but a 0% surcharge on apartments, which made no sense. So, we tried to make them match so that all of the multifamily uses had the same surcharge, all the single-family uses had the same surcharge, and we didn't have these discrepancies.
Thanks, David.
He always rescue me, so I don't want to- All right, any questions from up here?
I can just read the recommended committee action, as you know, to find the proposed ordinance amendment consistent with the Pasco County Comprehensive Plan and recommend approval to the Board of County Commissioners for the VOPH Land Development Code, Section 602-8-M3, text revisions, surcharge percentages, and revised transportation fee schedules.
Okay. Any questions? Any questions for Ernie? No? Okay, anybody here to speak on this? See no one? No one's online, right?
We have no one online for this item.
Okay. And are there motion?
Still moved.
Second.
A motion and two seconds? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign? Okay, Ernie, good job.
Mr. Chair, did you say you now wanted to do PC 4?
Yes. Uh, yes, right.
Hello, Amy Hyler with Long Range Planning.
So, I guess I'm the one that asked this to be pulled. Amy, was this your application?
Uh, no, I'm covering for somebody, for staff.
Well, that goes to the heart of my question, though, because, so, it appears that this site, the employment potential of this site is being reduced. For example, they're going from 80,000 office to 45,000, 30,000 retail to 10,000 retail. We're getting rid of ALF, and now there's multifamily. So, I'm not understanding why, if you look at the Denton Avenue one that you did.
Correct.
There's an analysis, there's an analysis about our economic development policies. There was coordination with the Office of Economic Growth to ensure that we were retaining the employment potential of that site.
Correct.
I don't see any of that analysis for this amendment, even though it's pretty clear to me it's reducing the employment potential of this site. There's no analysis about Policy 1.8.10. There's no analysis about Economic Development Policy 1.4.4. I don't see any fiscal impact analysis. I mean, I don't, I'm not understanding why staff is treating one, two applications dramatically differently when it comes to the preservation of the employment potential of the site. So, that's my concern. And I guess my question is, did anybody coordinate with the Office of Economic Growth on this application? Was there any analysis done about Policy 1.8.10, 1.4.4? Any fiscal impact analysis? It just seems like it's, it's just purely a reduction of the employment potential of the site without any analysis of those policies.
So, as it relates to 1.10, or 1.8.10 and 1.8.4, I know those speak directly to the employment generating uses of the IL flu. So, at least for the Denton Avenue purposes, that's why those were cited, because the IL flu was being removed in that scenario.
Yeah, but they don't just talk about industrial, because their office is also considered a high paying. So, this is clearly reducing office.
Absolutely. I'm not sure if David Engel was involved in this conversation as well, but I-
This is Terry Victarios-Pitos with the Planning and Development Department. On this particular project, we looked at it through the lens of the Multifamily Policy Directive that the Board had issued in July of 2020. And in this project, we approached it from a site planning. So, we reverse engineered, in a sense, what can possibly fit on the site, and how does, how do the different land uses line up on this irregular parcel? And working with the applicant, the site planning that we did with them to form the revisions to the planning, to the planned development, it was clear that in order to fit what they could do based on the multifamily, multifamily policy directive, which is to put multifamily on the property, but still meet the Board's intent of preserving employment generating land uses to create viable commercial street fundages, 45,000 square feet of professional medical office was established along the frontage of State Route 54 based on the parking capacities that 45,000 square feet would require. And then, from there, we started to, obviously, they had a number of units that they had to fundamentally meet to get the project done. So, they had a particular building size associated with the project that they had to meet. And so, in, in site planning, we determined that 45,000 square feet was appropriate to meet the multifamily, multifamily policy directive. In addition to that, we vertically, we had them vertically integrate 5,000 square feet of commercial retail office into the multifamily building that was separate from their clubhouse and leasing office spaces. And then, there was the bonus 3,500 square feet that was identified for pat veterinary activities. So, it was, it was a, we didn't talk to OAG necessarily on this particular project, though I believe it had been circulated to all the appropriate departments. But this particular site was looked at from the Multifamily Policy Directive and site planned conceptually in order to determine the proper entitlement levels for the planned development.
Well, I guess my concern, Terry, is that this seems, from a strictly entitlement perspective, seems eerily similar to partial S-19 in Seven Oaks. I mean, it's clearly an exchange of employment generating uses for apartments. And if staff wants to recommend approval of that, I'm not saying you can't, but there should be some analysis. At least with S-19, you did an economic analysis and a fiscal impact analysis to demonstrate why it met those policies. I see absolutely no analysis in this memo about why it meets our fiscal impact policies or our economic development policies. You're looking at it solely from a multifamily directive, but you're not looking at, in my opinion, you haven't looked at it at all from a economic development or fiscal impact perspective.
Right, but the-
And it might be okay, I don't know. I'm just saying that there should be some analysis in the memo addressing those policies. And I'm pointing this out because Amy, on a very, on our, on our agenda, there's one that specifically analyzes those policies for the Denton Avenue one. So, I'm not understanding why we're, even though this one is clearly reducing employment generation on the site, why we're not analyzing those policies here?
We could take a look at the policies. The, but the Multifamily Policy Directive was based on those policies to preserve employment generating land uses. And there are parcels along the corridor that are overentitled. And the site planning exercises that we went through with the applicant-
But I'm just being, just, it's not obvious to me that they are, because even ALF, in my opinion, and I don't know about David Engel, probably generates more employment than a multifamily apartment does. Probably, I think it's probably obvious that it does. So, I'm not, and they're clearly reducing office. They're clearly reducing retail. I don't, I guess I just, I'm not sure I agree with you that just because they comply with the Multifamily Policy Directive, that they automatically comply with those comp plan policies. And the comp plan policies are adopted provisions in our comp plan. They're not just a policy directive. So, this may be perfectly okay. I'm not saying it isn't. So, this may be perfectly okay, I'm not saying it isn't. I'm saying there needs to be more analysis that is not in this memo. And you did that analysis for S-19, and it wasn't done here. And even though S-19 got denied, at least the analysis was in the memo.
So, Cynthia is the applicant's legal representation, if you want to, she's got a couple comments.
Does she have the analysis for me?
I'd like to speak to it.
Okay.
Good afternoon, thank you. Cynthia Spidele, I'm with Sterns Weaver, 401 East Jackson Street in Tampa, and I have been sworn. We did do a detailed analysis as part of the application process, David, and if it would make you feel better, we could certainly attempt to beef that up in the staff memo between here and planning and board, the board hearing. I'd also like to mention Elise Batzel is the land use counsel, and she's online via WebEx, as well as Aliyah Teffy, to speak to transportation issues, so-
Transportation issues, sorry, I don't-
So, so what we did here, David, is we've actually increased the amount of acreage through the site, we have a very unique site configuration constraint here, and I don't know if we have an LMO, if we can pull this up, but, um- So, due to the unique site configuration, this is the part, it's about a mile west of the US 41-54 intersection, and it's where there's like a little hump in 54, so we're basically a right triangle. So, when we looked at what the entitlements were there, including the ALF entitlements that you were speaking to, we actually did a thorough, like, site configuration analysis of three other ALFs and ILFs in the area, including the two in Trinity, as one is Wiregrass. And because they have the benefits of, of using stormwater offsite, because they're part of a master planned unit development with master stormwater drainage plans, we don't have that situation here. So, we have a very constrained site, we have some wetlands, we have stormwater ponds and a permit already that has that, those areas fixed. So, so basically, we have limited net development acreage available to us, and when we looked at what was actually entitled on the property in the subarea, we do not believe, and I have the applicant here from Live Development that can speak to it well, that did all the site planning for it, we couldn't fit everything that was there. So, it was just, it was approved in the subarea policy prior at a level that was not realistic for what the site could actually yield. So, what we did was, recognizing the staff's concerns with regard to employment generation, is we've uniquely configured a medical office site at the corner there for forty-five thousand square foot medical office facility. And then we've put the multifamily behind that, and due to the, uh, ride in, ride out, that DOT sort of, we can move it a little bit, but not that much, so that kind of forces where our driveway location is. And that leaves sort of a residual parcel just east of that, which will be veterinary center, pet center, and a family park. So, we basically have site constraints, we don't really have that much development acreage available to us, so we've committed in the subarea policy to address your concerns to a minimum two net acres, I think it's three and a half gross acres, to the medical office facility. And I'd like to introduce Tim, who could actually speak to some of the site configuration constraints that led us to this development footprint.
You don't, you don't need to give me all of your justification right now, all I'm asking you and staff to do is analyze why this complies with policy one point eight point ten, ED one point four point four, why it's not a loss in, in, it's not a cost, loss from a fiscal impact perspective. It may all be okay, but I see none of this analysis, and I just say, it doesn't appear anybody coordinated with the Office of Economic Growth at all, so that concerns me as well. And I don't, and I think that needs to be in the memo. I mean, again, it may be okay, let's say it's a little odd to me, you're saying it's too constrained of a site for ALF, but it's perfectly fine for apartments, seems a little odd to me, but maybe it's all okay, I'll, my, I'm not-
I didn't say it was constrained for an ALF, I said it was constrained for the amount that was entitled in the subarea policy.
Right, but I guess, why couldn't you just do a smaller ALF? I mean-
Yeah, well, there were market issues with that, because the, the landowner, and we have submitted a letter into the record from the landowner that speaks to his experience with trying to find an ALF, an ILF user, and he actually tried to do it himself, and it turned out that they came up with a market analysis that there was an oversupply of ALF and ILF within the ten mile radius that they were researching, so he tried very hard to develop as that.
Oversupply of retail and office also?
Well, this is medical office, that's the reason why we specified and we revised the subarea policy to make it medical office slash professional office.
Is there also an oversupply of office? I mean, because I, you're saying that there's an oversupply of ALF, so that's why you don't want to do ALF, but why not?
Because we actually had, we're actually in discussions, well, my client's in discussions with a potential medical office user for that site, so that's the more realistic version for the site.
Then why couldn't the site be all medical office, is my question? If there's a market for medical office, why can't it all be medical office? Or retail?
Good afternoon, my name's Tim McKeach, and I'm with Live Development. We are the contract purchaser for the subject piece here, so-
And you've been sworn, right?
I've been sworn in, thank you, yes. So, we, we have been working on this project since roughly 2019 with the current landowner. And we went through the process of analyzing the currently approved MPUD, which allows for ALF, and the retail and office uses referenced in, you know, your comments. And the reality of the site is that it has been over entitled, to the extent that if it was built strictly as a one hundred and ten thousand square foot office or retail, the ten usable net acres would result in an FAR of about point two five, so it would be no way in reality that we could fit an ALF project in addition to the one hundred and ten thousand with the required parking for each use. So, layer in the ALF with two hundred and seventy-five thousand in the original approvals, it's clearly, there's too much, there's too much entitlement for this site to even fit the buildings, the, the level square footage, and the parking that would be required for those uses. Now, going back historically, the original owner went through the process of designing the property, and he and his plan had a similar acreage allocation of about three acres gross to the corner piece, and the ALF fit on the same exact component that we're showing the, the multifamily today. The, if you were to apply the one hundred and ten thousand square feet of office and retail to just the three acre gross, that would be an FAR point eight four, so there, you wouldn't be able to fit that much entitlement onto just three acres of gross acres on the corner. So, that also points to the fact that there is, it's over entitled for what the uses. This is a site that has been approved before by the county as an MPUD, so there's obviously a mix of uses that is allowed here. And what we've tried to do in our site planning, both dating back to 2019 when we looked at it for an ALF use, and today as we're looking at it as a mixed use with an apartment, is how do we fit a reasonable balance of these components so that from an economic viability perspective it works, that we can get the mix of uses that the county desires, both employment generating, also residential. This is the plan that we've landed on that works today. In 2019, we went through the process of a market study with our senior living group. They found the oversupply issue, the letter that's in your packet would also state that the, the owner today went through that process since 2012, also faced the same headwinds related to oversupply. So, what we're trying to do today is meet all the subarea policy requirements, create a viable mixed use project, which we feel that this plan does. We have both an out parcel component of three gross acres with five to one thousand, excuse me, five parking spaces per one thousand square feet of medical office. That is the demand for medical office development, and so we've been able to fit that forty-five thousand on the corner, or the, you know, I guess the triangle. We've met or attempted to meet all the subarea policies related to commercial and retail frontage along 54. We've also incorporated a mixed use component of retail into the multifamily. So, this is, I think, the reality of taking the entitlement package that was approved previously, putting a site plan together that's financially feasible and economically feasible, and presenting it to the board for, and for your consideration as an amendment to this, to both the comp plan and eventually the MPUD, and so-
So, I, I'm not disagreeing with you that the site was probably over entitled, I'm not disagreeing with that point, I'm just pointing out that, yes, it was over entitled, but that doesn't necessarily mean you take the land that is available and you convert it to multifamily. You could take the lands available and make it all medical office, you can make it all office and retail, it doesn't mean that just because it's over entitled, you have to convert it to multifamily. That's my concern, and I'm not sure whether that's, that conversion to multifamily satisfies our economic development policies, our fiscal impact policies. It may or may not, I don't know, because there's no analysis in our memo that talks about those policies.
Okay, Elise Batzel, who's our land use attorney, is online, so we'd like to have, introduce her and have her speak to some of your concerns as well. She's unmuted.
She just muted herself.
Elise, if you can hear me, you're unmuted.
She doesn't have a lot to say, I guess.
Trying to speak, I'm unmuted.
Okay, go ahead.
And the board, that the staff and the applicant supply additional information, is that the request?
Yes, and I would hope that information shows that-
I would hope that information shows that-
I know we got feedback, but-
Yeah, we're, we're being told that there's a lot of feedback.
We're being told that there's a lot of feedback.
If you can turn down, turn my microphone.
Okay. David, you were saying, I'm sorry, you didn't finish your thought.
So, yes, the application's missing any analysis about compliance with the economic development policies in our comp plan, specifically one point eight point ten and one point four point four economic development policy, and our fiscal impact policy. That analysis is all missing. I don't know what the results of it are, because it's not here. So, usually that, if the analysis was done, we, the results would be in the memo, but, so I don't know, I guess my concern-
So, you're, you're just saying it's not in your staff memo.
And, and I'm pointing out, there's another memo on our agenda where that analysis is in the memo. And so, I'm not understanding, this is really a question for our staff, is why is it that one application has a full analysis about the economic development impact and compliance with those policies, but then another application doesn't, even though this, in my opinion, this, this application is clearly reducing the employment potential of this site? So, that, that's my concern. Now, if Planning Commission feels comfortable moving it forward with that big mystery, I guess that's up to the Planning Commission, but I'm, I'm concerned that there's no analysis here about the economic development impact. And what concerns me even more is that nobody coordinated with the Office of Economic Growth so that they could stand up here and say it's still an equal or better economic impact. And I'll be honest with you, and my other concern is, why is this on the consent agenda when, you know, our board has been pretty clear about wanting to preserve employment on the 54 corridor? And so, I'm not sure why this, this to me directly implicates some of the policy directors of the Board of County Commissioners and should not be on our consent agenda.
Mr. Chairman.
Roberto.
If I may, I agree with David, it's not about just to deny this application, it's to have the right information and treat every single application the same. So, I move a motion to continue this application for the next board meeting, if they are okay with the CD, and we have the analysis for the economic growth and the fiscal analysis as well.
All right, so we have a motion on the table?
Well, let's let Mr. Petos speak, he's-
Yeah, I was gonna, let me see if I can get a second, and then we can open it up for, yeah.
I'll second that motion.
Okay. So, we have a motion on the floor, and now we're open for discussion.
Mr. Chairman, Victarius-Petos, Planning and Development. So, as I mentioned earlier, the project was circulated, and the comments that were received from the Office of Economic Growth were that OEG does not object to this land use amendment proposal due to the property's site-specific environmental constraints and restrictive remaining uplands, suggesting that the OEG looked at the irregular law, the number, the amount of wetlands on that site, and did not consider it fully available for the, did not consider the property important enough, I guess, for the maintenance of the over entitlement. But I just want to point out that the other amendment that was on the, that is on the agenda today that does include that analysis that Mr. Goldstein is referring to, we did consult with the Office of Economic Growth on that one, because there was a large land area available for potential office development there, and we wanted to be able to preserve that. But even in that case, there was still a reduction in the economic development potential that was on the books versus what could actually be built. So, it, it's kind of the same scenario in both instances. There's a reduction on the Denton Avenue case, but there's also a reduction here. Even in this reduction, however, we've preserved fifty percent of the employment generating land use based on the site planning potential that is available to the site.
Well, that assumes that ALF has no employment generating potential, which I don't think is an accurate assumption.
Well, it's going, ALF is going to have the, the administrative staff and the nurses, so to speak, that would look over the, the people that would be there. But that also could be the same amount of people that are grounds crew maintenance and office workers in a multifamily building. So, it, not necessarily that one will have more than the other, one may have-
Your, your position is that multifamily has just as much employment as ALF.
I don't know that for certain.
Is that really your position?
I don't know that for certain.
Maybe that is the case, I just want to see the data, data, that is simple.
I mean, I guess the other concern I have, Terry, is this is on the 54 corridor, I mean, I get your point about Denton, but the board has not really had the same interest in the preservation of employment on Denton Avenue. I understand that you did your best to improve, preserve employment on Denton, but this is the 54, this is our major economic development corridor, where the board has said they want to see employment generating land, land uses. It's not obvious to me that this is preserving that mission. And it may be that this is all fine, I don't know, but I think there should be some analysis about the economic, potential economic loss, if it, and if it's okay, then explain why it's okay. I mean, you're, the, the memo didn't even have the statement from the Office of Economic Growth in it, that you just read.
Any other discussion from up here?
Yeah, I'd like to make a comment about the nursing home or the AFL, ALF. I have a son that's a director in that business, of course, he's not in the state of Florida, but you talked about nursing staff and clerical staff, but there's also culinary staff, food server staff, this custodial staff, they generally have some type of security, and they operate on a twenty-four, seven basis, too. So, there's a significant number of employees there, in addition to the, the medical staff that will come in to visit these folks, or these patients.
Well, I, I firmly agree with you, and I totally disagree with Mr. Petos, I have a mother who was just in an ALF facility.
Yeah.
The level of employment in ALF facility far exceeds what's in a multifamily apartment complex, so I'm not even sure that's accurate to say that they're equivalent, but regardless, that's all analysis that should be in the memo. That's, that's my point.
And, and another point, that these positions are relatively high paying. I know my son, he's in the six-figure bracket for nursing home director. Nurses are, you know, are, are paid significantly. And then you have LPN, so I think-
The other, the other analysis that's missing from here, in my opinion, is multifamily has an additional school impact that ALF does not. And so, I saw nothing in this memo that's saying that whether the schools in this area can accommodate the additional impact. It may be that they can, but clearly ALF is not going to have an impact on schools, multifamily apartments clearly does, but I saw no statement in the memo about the these schools, I mean, far last time I heard from school districts, a lot of the schools on 54 corridor are over capacity, so there should be something in this memo addressing whether they can accommodate the additional school impact.
Okay.
I mean, that's certainly a concern. I mean, elementary-wise, that there's zone for like Myrtle, they're probably all right, but Rushee and Sunlight.
We got a letter from you, Chris, because we did the MPUD, so we did the school questionnaire with the MPUD, and we're here for the comp plan.
No, I understand.
But we, but we did the questionnaire for the MPUD, and that's all in the file and in the application.
Understand, and long-term, we, you know, if something went here, then we'd manage, but-
And Cynthia, you may very well have done a lot of the analysis that I'm talking about, but what's in front of us today has none of that in it.
Right, so what I, what is in the application, especially for the MPUD, because we wanted these to be heard concurrently for this, for this exact reason, was how an ALF is structured. So, if we were to build two hundred and seventy-five thousand square feet of ALF on the site, there would be no medical office building. So, I just wanted to make sure you realize that there is employment generation opportunity in a two-story medical office building in that forty-five thousand, three-acre site that we have in the corner. And so, what we really tried to do was try to balance all of these competing interests to come up with a realistic site plan that you will get, you will get your employment generation, you're going to get the, the office building, you're going to get the veterinary pet center, you're going to get everything, you're going to get the multifamily behind that. And staff's really worked hard with us to do this, to get to this point.
It may be that the jobs are equivalent, I don't know, but it's not obvious to me, and there's nothing in this memo saying why it is or isn't.
Yeah, well, we'd be happy to work with staff to get that information between now and the board meeting on March twenty-second. And I'm sure a lot of it's in, in the application, we just have to put it together in a format for you and beef up the staff memo.
Okay. Could you restate your motion? Roberto?
Absolutely. Again, maybe you are right, Cynthia, depending on the size of the medical assisted living facility can be reduced, and you can have a medical office as well. So, it's how you see, how you design it, let me, let me finish my, my idea. So, we don't have the information that we needed, in my opinion, personal opinion, to go and move this today. That doesn't mean we are not going to move in the next board meeting, that is not, that can be the case, I'm just asking for the information to be evaluated for us in order for us to pass this.
I understand, and that's the reason why when the comp plan was originally adopted back in two thousand and six, when you had the PD flu, the MPUD was originally, David may remember this, was originally required to go as companion to it, because it's a negotiated FAR, a negotiated density, so.
No, this is, no, this is with you.
But, but the subarea, and what staff's saying, is that if we vertically integrate, we're done, right? So, we have two- So we have two options. We either preserve that frontage and have employment generating uses that are solely for office and retail along that frontage, and put the multifamily behind it, or we vertically, vertically integrate everything, and the sub-area allows that.
I know what you're talking about. That's for what I'm leaving for, okay? I move a motion to continue. Until we obtain the data, and you can-
And we have a second.
Now, since there's no citizen opposition, you don't necessarily have to continue it to the next Newport Ritchie meeting, but I don't know how long staff needs to do, and the applicant need to prepare this analysis.
I think, it seems like they have a lot of the work done, it just wasn't included in the report. So-
We can update the agenda by the next board.
I know Amy, it wasn't Amy's report, so you're standing in for somebody. Yeah.
Well, yeah, and if David Engel had put in his comments that there was issues or concerns, obviously we would have addressed that, so we didn't get that comment from him, and that's the reason why, you know, he supported it, or their office did.
But putting aside David Engel, the Board of County Commissioners has raised concerns about these type of conversions.
Yeah, and we've met, we've met with most of them already, so. And we've tried to incorporate certain components of their concerns in the revised site plan. And we've done all the ex parte work, so that will be, you know, included in the record when we go to the board.
Just for clarification, is the statement from David Engel sufficient, or do they need to do the analysis?
I still think they need to do the analysis. It's a, so these are policies of a comprehensive plan, I don't think you can just ignore them.
We can touch base with David Engel again.
We didn't ignore them. They weren't included in the agenda memo, but they were not ignored.
Yeah, I think, you know, I think it's, I think it's evident that, in your mind,
In your mind?
You considered all those items.
You considered all of them.
It isn't laid out in the, excuse me.
Isn't laid out.
Is he, is he talking after me?
I didn't know you had a twin.
That's not your voice.
Echo, echo, echo.
I think we've got all the material to do the job properly. And I think you have a good case for what you're asking. But I think you need to have time to put it together, and I don't think it'll take very long. I don't think there's any reason why we can't continue it to the next meeting. Like, like David said, there's no local opposition, so there's no reason why it can't be done in Dade City.
So it sounds like the application might already, or the applicant might already have that economic analysis. David, you're suggesting that David Engel's office still needs to produce that, is it?
It doesn't have to be David Engel that produces it. If the applicant has the analysis that I'm asking for, then it just needs to be included in the memo.
And to the extent it's not already in the application, I'm happy to provide that for you.
Very good. All right, so we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
Well, and just back to David's point, I mean, it's, we need to be consistent. Because it's Seven Oaks. Even though I said capacity was fine, there was still, you know, people were bringing it up that it has school impacts, which is, which it does. So that ought to be included as well.
All right. All right, so there's no further discussion? I have a vote. All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
So the continuance is to which date, just so I'm clear?
The continuance, if it's to the next date, that would be the March 3rd, 2022 Planning Commission meeting at 1:30 in Dade City.
Is the applicant okay with going to Dade City?
I'm also happy to write the staff memo, too, so.
Okay. Motion and second. Favor signify by saying aye. You have a question?
Do you have a question?
No, I was just saying, calling for a question.
Oh, okay.
All opposed? Like sign? Okay, the motion carries.
Good afternoon. Liam Devine, Planning and Development, item PC 3, PDD 22-7587, in the name of Habib Enterprises LLC. It is a zoning amendment from AR Agricultural Residential District to R1MH, single-family slash mobile home district. The subject site is located on the north side of Bolton Avenue, approximately 100 feet west of Hicks Road. Here's a look at the aerial view. The surrounding future land use to the north and west is rez 6. To the east is rez 3 and rez 6, and to the south is rez 3 and rez 6. The surrounding zoning to the northeast and south is AR, and to the west is R1MH. The subject site is currently undeveloped on approximately 6.85 acres. The applicant proposes to develop the property with mobile homes in conformance with the R1MH single-family mobile home district standards. The surrounding area is characterized by residential development consisting of site-built and mobile slash manufactured homes. The subject site has a future land use classification of rez 6 under the comprehensive plan, and access to the property is from Bolton Avenue, a county-maintained local road with approximately 50 feet of right-of-way, and Hicks Road, a county-maintained local road with approximately 50 feet of right-of-way. And this is coming with a recommendation form for approval from PDD staff. Come here if you have any questions.
Okay. Is the applicant present?
The applicant is on the way.
All right.
Can you hear me, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, we can hear you.
Can you hear me, Mr. Chairman? Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, board members. My name is Todd Pressman, 202nd Avenue, South Number 435 in St. Petersburg, Florida. Appreciate your time this afternoon. Staff has presented this to you with their support. This is a site that is in the, it is a rez 6 future land use camp, which is a higher density of this area. All that is sought here is mobile home development per the standards on 6.85 acres, which would result in approximately 15 units. There's been a long history of similar zonings from 1981 to 2006 by the Board of County Commissioners for R-1MH, single-family mobile home zoning in the area. And it's surrounded, as staff has indicated, by mobile home development and single-family development. And as presented by your staff and support, we feel that it is clearly cohesive and compatible with the immediate area. And we appreciate your consideration. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Is anyone here to object? All right.
Mr. Chair, we do have someone signed up to speak, Ms. Deborah Duraniskey.
Okay. We have two people present, so let's take them first. You give us your name and address.
Good afternoon, Deborah Duraniskey. I was sworn in. I have two parcels.
Deborah, what's your, what's your address, please?
Okay, my address is 15508 Juliet Court, which is directly behind the property that he's purchased. I also have the next parcel next to that, but it doesn't come up as an address. So it is parcel number
Okay.
And that is listed under my name, but if you, if you try to search it, you can't find it under my name for some reason. I have had a problem with flooding for many years. I've owned this property since 2005. There's been, there's been additional residential areas put in. There's been additional roads put in, but nothing done with the sewers or stormwater drainage. I emailed the Public Works Director, and that was August 29th in 2019. Branford forwarded it to Deborah Tanner, who is the Public's project supervisor. The only contact I have had is, my daughter lives on the property now, but the only contact was I needed to come over because I was a property owner and sign a form so that they could start work there. There, it is the only drainage ditch from, and it is a county road-owned road to Juliet, but the only drainage ditch east of Bolton is on Charmwood, and I believe it's just one street that probably even has sewer and water. And then from Charmwood, all the way to the very end of Bolton, which is, I believe DOT is running out of there right now, I'm the only storm drain. So through the years, it keeps getting worse and worse. It's compromised my well this year. The next rainfall that possibly we have, maybe I'll lose my house. Because there is no ditch there now. And it drains into a pond on the property that wants to be changed. I have a picture of it. It's also, the pond behind the drainage ditch is marked Zone A flood district. So I propose no more residential until Pasco County does do something with the stormwater. There is no ditches. I don't know if you're familiar with what they call the pits. So the pits goes from New York Avenue over to Bolton, and Pasco County Sheriff has it extreme, hard time in that area with four-wheelers, and I'm sure several other things, but, so now either DOT or Pasco County has made walls of dirt around these pits. So there is no drainage going into these pits now. So everything coming down the hill, and I have a picture of that also, down the hill Bolton this way, and down the hill Bolton this way, is going into my one culvert. And I don't know what's going to happen next.
Aerial there, where's your property?
Okay, just to the left there, I, do you have like some lines drawn there? I have a half acre and, with a mobile home, double Y on there, and then next to it, I have another vacant half acre. It's my property, yes, that little line. No, no, across, right at the pond. Yeah, that my line goes right down that pond. So when we have rain, that pond becomes my other half acre. And now it's starting to come into my other half acre with the mobile home. Public Works has done nothing.
Where's the property we're considering in relation to your property?
It is, actually, it's part of that pond. It goes straight back, it's a Okay, so you've got Hicks Road here, which is a county-owned road. Right directly behind Hicks is the property in consideration, which is Turtle Lane, which is not a county road. And it just goes straight back. It's like a rectangle. I'm sure it was just bought for delinquent taxes. And because the gentleman behind me, I always saw his property taxes were delinquent, and then it was sold. I'm sorry, I'm very nervous.
No need to be. Take your deep breath.
But I have pictures of my property after rainwater. I have pictures of the one sewer drain in that entire area, and the one culvert that is not maintained.
All right, do you want to put them on the overhead?
Sure.
Go ahead.
This is what they have on Charmwood. I wish we had something like that there. And then I also have like a picture of Bolton, so you can see the hills, because I don't have access to your computer model to see the runoff.
Ma'am, those pictures that you're showing, did you want the Planning Commission to receive and file them for the record, or?
I, I can leave these, yes.
Do you have extras? Because when this goes to the Board of County Commissioners-
Yes, I have extras of all these, and I-
Do you want us to receive and file those pictures?
Yes, please.
Okay, do you have a motion?
Move to receive and file. Second.
Okay.
So if you could give them to the somebody so that they can give them to the clerk and then she can-
I have a question for the staff. Just to double-check, the lot that the lady is referencing about is the one called 15508? And the one north of that?
I think that's right.
15508, in this area that we have here.
The corner lot, one, regulated north.
Yeah, I have the corner lot at Bolton and Juliet.
And so, okay.
Actually, two parcels.
Okay, yes.
There. Also, so now, additional rainwater is coming because Pasco County has paved Hicks Road from Bolton Avenue to Denton. There are no ditches. There is nothing but a raised road. From what I see, see if I can get my notes right here. The transportation plan, project number 3179, lists that that paved road will next be going from New York Avenue to Bolton. Okay.
And the property that we're considering is under consideration is where that lake is, where the A is?
Correct. It is parcels number, I don't know about parcels number, I have addresses. The addresses that are in consideration are 9925 Bolton, 15509 Turtle Lane, 15607 Turtle Lane, 15919 Turtle Lane, and 15639 Turtle, Turtle Lane.
Yeah.
And he's considering 15 homes? The impact. I'm going to lose my house.
Is that, you're all on well and septic out there, right?
Yes. But one storm drain for that entire area that was put in in 1983?
So, Mr. Chairman, she's done, I have a question for staff, but I don't know.
Go ahead. I think, are you finished, ma'am?
Yes, I think I am, thank you. Oh, also, DOT is at the end of Bolton Road, so all of their trucks are also causing a lot of erosion because Bolton Avenue is paved just beyond my lot. I mean, not paved just beyond my lot. So DOT is coming down there with their trucks, you're causing erosion from there, et cetera. Thank you very much.
Thank you for coming. Okay. David, do you have any comments or questions?
Well, just a question for staff. So Liam, how many units could this site get under the existing AR zoning, and then how many units can it get with the proposed R1MH zoning?
Sure, so Denise Hernandez, Planning and Development, under the existing AR zoning, it can get a total of six units. And then let me just do a calculation real quick for the other one. It can get a total of 15 units under R1MH.
Okay, would 15 units trigger a stormwater plan review?
I believe the answer to that is yes. Will Poone may be on, online, we can check.
I'm just trying to figure out whether, if the Planning Commission approves it, it's going to go through stormwater plan review to address the drainage issues that were. Brad's shaking his head, yes.
Yeah.
All right. Would you like to come forward, sir? Stay, stay- Ask your friend here to do it. No, just ask your friend to do it, because you've already, you've already been up, and we can't take comment without knowing who you are, so.
Yes, thank you for stating that. The three minutes have been exceeded by this person.
Right. Right.
All right, do I need to be sworn in or anything?
Have you been sworn?
No.
Okay, yes.
Direct your attention to the court.
Over here.
You swear, friend, you're about to give us the truth to help you out?
Yes, I do.
Okay, and your name and address?
My name is Stephen Parker. My address is 1-5714 Juliet Court, Hudson, Florida, Pasco County. Actually, I didn't plan on coming here today. I was actually dropping off a water sample and I had registration for some of my vehicles that needed to be done at the tax office. And I realized it was the same place. So I really didn't really plan on too much to say, except I noticed that the, this is just an example of urban sprawl. You've got an area that cannot support anybody building houses back there. One, you've got, you've got birds that are back there, like woodpeckers and stuff that are endangered. And you also have turtles. Actually, tortoises, not turtles. There's a difference between the two. I was there, I was dropping off my water samples because we can't support anybody else taking water or putting wastewater back into the system. The shale limestone is only 10 feet down. And during the dry season, what ends up happening, I end up sucking up the shale from the ground. So I don't know if any water testing has been done or any environmental testing has been done to see whether they can support this extra, extra, actually, I know it can't support the sewage because I'm gonna be drinking somebody else's water. 15 houses on six acres? I thought the rulings were you had to have an acre per house. How are you gonna put 16? And what are you gonna end up with?
Sir, that's why they're asking if we're rezoning. You're right, the current zoning would only allow six homes, but they're asking to rezone it.
Oh, no, there's no, no, no way, it won't support it. It won't support it because it will be drinking. I don't have, my water is well water. What are they gonna do for water? During the dry season, I'm sucking, I'm sucking up limestone out of the ground. And where's the sewage gonna go? Right now, my water's not suitable to drink. I just dropped off the test. The last test I had, the water has bacteria in it. So now you're gonna put more sewers in there? And you're gonna be dumping more water into a ground where the limestone is only 10 feet down? It's gonna, I don't care, you need more sand than that to sift out all that bacteria that you're adding. Are they gonna put sewer system in? Are they gonna bring water into the area for 15 homes? It's not gonna support it, there's no way. And...
All right, anything else?
Yeah, the infrastructure can't handle it. Already Bolton Avenue, you can't drive down without losing your teeth. The road is in such bad condition, you're gonna add more trucks coming in to take the waste garbage out. And you're gonna have more traffic coming in. The road is already falling apart and needs to be in repair. The human density alone is gonna be crazy. You know what happens when you get 15 homes of that type? And there you're gonna have large families living in small units. So it's really gonna be taxing it because it's lower income. And yeah, the infrastructure won't, the traffic...
All right, that's the, that's your time's up. We got the idea, thank you very much for coming today.
All right, thank you.
And we'll, do we have anybody else online, I think you said?
We don't have anyone online. Just the representative, Mr. Pressman is on.
Okay. All right, so if he would like to respond?
I would, Mr. Chairman, thank you. Of course, as the board members realize, this is the zoning, the first step. And as one of the board members indicated, they would have to go through storm player, stormwater plant review and all the other reviews required. 15 units is a lot of zoning. They're not gonna be able to yield 15 units. Just look at that item, that Rutland Area A, that's gonna restrict units on the surface. So the year will be less than 15. I think we have to keep in mind that the plan has the area at Res 6 as a maximum density. We have sent out 94 notice letters plus posting. So the tremendous majority of immediately budding neighbors have not responded. Again, that was 94 separate letters. I have the greatest respect for the two citizens who came down today. They sound like nice and fine people. But those are only two of the 90 that were sent. The concerns that they raised are all post-zoning. Those are gonna be looked at closely, that's included in the staff report. And your professional staff has filed the request on a zoning basis as consistent and cohesive. I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have, thank you.
Any questions from the best? Okay, so you haven't contemplated what kind of sewage disposal you're gonna have there or water system?
Mr. Chairman, you cut out, I'm sorry, would you repeat the question?
What have you contemplated in terms of your sewage disposal and water system?
My understanding is that would be well and septic as permitted and reviewed by the county.
One septic per unit, is that what you mean?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
And water?
Would be well, sir.
Okay. All right. Any questions or comments for the applicant? All right, thank you, sir, appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, I think most of us are familiar with that area. I personally think that, you know, the 15 units on that property is too dense. I don't think it's in keeping with the neighborhood. And I'm concerned about the water and sewer because I know it's all well and septic out there. And so, you know, I have, I have some serious reservations about allowing 15 units to go on that property. Bearing in mind that they still have to go through, you know, site plan approval and all that stuff, so. But I'm open to, obviously, open to everyone's comments and open to be persuaded otherwise. Anybody else?
I have a question, because I can't tell from this aerial. The homes that are on Juliet, what is that, Juliet's Court?
Mm-hmm.
Are those site-built homes or mobile homes? What are those?
There's a...
I think it's a mix.
There's a mixture of mobile manufactured and some site-built homes.
And what is the zoning of Juliet?
They're zoned R1MH, which is what the applicant is requesting today.
And then, can you put the zoning map back up just so I can see it? Okay, so I guess, so there's some AR in the area and then there's also RM1. There's both types of zonings around them, it looks like.
Right.
Denise, can you give us any history about why this, the R1MH zoning is sort of a hodgepodge through this area?
Yes, well, because of the future land use out there. So since it's Res, it's Res 6, folks have asked to, and as you can see also, there are a lot, even in the AR areas, those are small lots of record. Those are lots that are less than one acre in lot, in lot area. So yes, they're AR by the district, but they're not AR by definition from the perspective of that they're smaller than one acre. Which AR by definition is a one acre minimum lot size. So you have smaller lot sizes out there than the one acre in AR. However, when zoning was overlaid in 1975, it was overlaid as AR, agricultural residential.
And that area was developed before 75?
That's, most of the area, yes, that's accurate.
So if, if they were to, if this weren't rezoned and they were to develop it, would a minimum lot have to be an acre?
The minimum lot would have to be an acre and the minimum lot width would have to be 125 feet. Yeah, so if you look to the west beyond where it says PUD and you see the AR, that is an old subdivision, Oakwood Heights. It's Plat Book 7, which was developed in the 50s and 60s. So you see like very small lots out there.
Right.
I just pulled one lot specifically, just out of all the lots. And, and the lot is only .25 of an acre.
All right, any further comments from up here?
So Denise, if I'm, just, just so I'm understanding correctly, if it is rezoned R1MH, they have to meet all the standards of the R1MH zoning category as far as lot size, width, depth? So it would have to be minimum lot size 20,000 square feet?
That's correct. The minimum lot size for R1MH is 20,000 square feet. It has to have it, a lot that's at least 100 feet wide. So yes, they're, they have to meet all the dimensional standards and bulk standards for the R1MH district.
And as far as, and I'm getting into weeds here, when it comes in for design, I mean, obviously for access, there would have to be some kind of access granted. So I mean, there's quite a bit of land that would be lost for that and...
Yes, absolutely. And also in your, in your agenda packet, it does say that they did sit through a pre-application meeting on April 14th of 2021, where a lot of those things were discussed with them.
Was, was retention discussed or is that not come till later?
That, they were just, it's overall, but it will come in later, absolutely, when they submit for their preliminary development plan.
I'm not personally in favor of it, but I think under the circumstances and what has to follow, and given the lot sizes surrounding it, I'd be inclined to approve the request.
Isn't, am I thinking of something else? But didn't there used to be like a criteria worksheet for approval and denial of zoning requests?
Yes, we can bring that up for you if you'd like.
Can you, that would be great.
So I do have one more before you all make your motions. So Denise, the, the RM1H, R1MH to the, the one on Juliet Court, was that developed before we had drainage regulations?
Yes, highly likely it was developed before we had drainage regulations because I looked at the rezoning and the rezoning is from like 1981 or 1982.
So, because it looks like it's about 15 lots. Is it a bigger site or a smaller site than, than what we're dealing with now?
If you give me just a second, I can add up all the area for that site.
Yes, while they're doing that, just to interject, my concern is not necessarily the lot size, it's the, it's the water and the sewer issue. I think that's a, that's a real concern for me and it would be for the neighbors. I think that's a realistic concern for the neighbors. I think that's a hurdle that's...
So Will Poon is asking if he can speak, please? So if you would upgrade him, I think he's got some information to provide. Will, if you, you can go ahead.
Good afternoon, everyone. Just from this statement you just made, I just want to make it clear though, the acre matter when you're dealing with this septic tank and water well on the same parcel? There's a minimum requirement of half an acre if you're gonna have both a septic tank drain field and a well on the parcel. So anything less than half an acre is not gonna work if you're proposing both a septic tank drain field and a water well.
All right.
And...
Just letting you know.
By my measurement, so the, the development to the west, I had is 9.75 acres. I'm showing this, it's a little over six and a half acres. I don't know what Denise got, but that's what I got.
Well, can we see that sketch again, or that plot again?
So I got 8.2, but I didn't count the road. So it is, it is a larger area.
Yeah.
And I do want to mention that all the lots to the west of it are at least half an acre in size. So they're at least .50, there's a couple that are .53.
Well then realistically, it seems like by the time they put in drainage...
Right.
A road, it doesn't seem like they're gonna get anything close to 15 units.
No.
Especially if each one has to be half an acre, it's probably like maybe 10 to 12.
And a minimum depth of 150 feet and the whole property's only 220 feet wide.
What was the minimum depth, Amy?
150.
Yeah, so R1MH by definition is a lot that's at minimum 100 feet wide and at minimum 150 feet deep. Yeah, so certainly, you know, when we look at the, at the max, at the 15, that is just basically taking the gross, right? So, and then that's what they submit for their timing and phasing because that's the maximum possible that could even happen. But obviously, we know when you, as David stated, drainage and then of course, as, as Mr. Girardi stated, the lot depth, that's gonna, you're not gonna have 15 lots.
Well, the reason I'm asking these questions is because if it's, if by the time they go through all that, they're down to six or seven lots anyway, that's not much different than what the current zoning would allow. But, you know, I don't know if it would go that low once they go through all of that analysis. But that doesn't necessarily solve the water and sewer issue, but I'm just...
Yeah, I mean, I just don't see how it's gonna be an enhancement through the county to do what we're talking about doing.
Now Denise, I guess AR1, it has to be site-built homes?
That's correct. Or modulators, could be modular home.
Can we have the zoning criteria back up?
Yeah, just a moment, can you pull that up, please?
Is it? Can I make a motion or? Well, I think we're waiting for one thing.
No, no, it's up there, I'm fine.
Oh, you got what you want, okay.
That's all I was looking for.
Yeah, go ahead.
I make a motion to deny based on item 17, the proposed zoning change will not be consistent with the goal. I'm sorry, that is not the one I'm talking about, the, one second.
18?
No. 14, the property is developed under zoning classification with appropriate public facilities included, but not limited to water and sewer system. Number four, if you can go up, please, down, sorry. Change or changing condition may, no. Okay, number five, the proposed change will not adversely affect or will adversely affect living condition in the immediate and surrounding neighborhoods.
Okay. So we have our motion?
Only a comment that if you're gonna recommend denial, you probably should cite 6 also. Because my understanding is that all the roadways accessing the site are substandard.
I agree.
Is that what staff that write up says?
I will add number six as well.
Okay.
18, probably two.
Few of them.
So the motion is to deny based upon items five and 14?
Five, 14, 18. Five, 14, 18.
And six.
And six.
And six.
Okay. All right, so we have a motion. Do we have a second on the motion?
I'll second it.
Okay. Any further discussion of the motion?
I do, I, so there would be no trigger to do anything with the roads, right? With the development of this size?
Well, there's a.
So you're. Go ahead, David, I'm sorry.
Well, the way our regulations work, a site with this few trips just has to pay a proportionate share of the cost of fixing the road, but that doesn't necessarily guarantee the road will get fixed.
Right.
So the answer to your question is they have to pay a, what is it, $6,000? What was the number in the?
Yeah, $6,020.
Um, but all that the county does with that money is they put it into a pot for a future road improvement, like a PVAS project or maybe if we go to resurface it, then we would use that money for that purpose. But the answer to your question directly, the applicant would not be responsible for bringing the road up to standard.
Gotcha, thank you.
It would stay substandard, basically, until the county did something with it.
Right.
All right. So any further discussion of the motion? All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Okay, motion carries.
Thank you. So that was the last item on the agenda, but I know that David has a presentation on ethics and sunshine law.
So yes, um, one of the planning commission members asked me to briefly give you a refresher on your legal obligations, I guess, which is important since we're all just reappointed to the planning commission. Most of it's, I'm not going to go through all, what is it? Nine pages of this, I'm sorry, seven pages. But I'll just hit the highlights. And most of you all know these things, but I just want to kind of reemphasize a few things. So first of all, what's in here is that you do have to yearly fill out a financial disclosure form and I think most of you are probably getting that form from the state. Is anybody not getting that form from the state?
I've not gotten one from the state. I get one from.
From somebody. Are you getting a financial disclosure form mailed to you?
Did you get one last year?
No.
I did.
I did.
I don't.
I typically get it, but it seems like it's been a while. It seems like it's been longer than a year, but I'll check.
Well, you're supposed to complete them yearly. If you're not getting them yearly, please let me know and we'll try to figure out why. Okay, because you, your legal obligation is to, is to fill out those financial disclosure forms annually and then also if you ever leave the planning commission, you have to fill out the form again, which some people don't realize when they resign, they have to fill out another financial disclosure form. That pretty much hits the financial disclosure requirements. In terms of sunshine law and public records, I think you all know what the sunshine law requires, but I'm going to kind of hit some sort of hidden traps. So generally, the sunshine law requires that when you're discussing planning commission business, that you do so at this hearing, at the notice public hearing, and that you do it in a way that the clerk can capture those discussions. The reason I emphasize that is because, you know, you all can have dialogue outside of this notice public hearing, but it cannot be about planning commission business. If you want to talk about how the lightning of the bucks are playing, have a, talk about that all you want, but it doesn't mean you can't be friends, but you cannot talk about any item that's likely to come on a, on a planning commission agenda with each other. Those communications are not just verbal. They could be texts, they could be emails, Facebook posts, any form of communication between each other where you're talking about planning commission business could potentially be a violation of the sunshine law. In addition, and this is the part that I want to caution you on, you can't have you having side conversations that are not about the, about what's on the agenda that are not audible to the clerk because the whole idea of the sunshine law is that it's to be open to the public. So that means the clerk has to capture your conversations about the application. So it doesn't mean, you know, if you're here right before the meeting and you're having side conversations, those side conversations should not be about planning commission business. Those should be about the lightning of the bucks, that's fine. Or what did you do this last weekend? That's all fine. But planning commission business, they need, needs to be discussed on the record so the clerk can capture those conversations. Now, I'm not a member of the planning commission technically, so you can whisper to me, but you cannot whisper to, you cannot whisper to, or you can whisper to Denise, you cannot whisper to each other. In terms of public records, the key thing to remember is that when, because you all do get contacted by applicants and opponents. Sometimes that's by email, sometimes that's by text, sometimes it might be by a Facebook post. There are various ways which members of the public or the applicants will send you information. All of that information has to be captured as a public record so that if somebody does a public records request to the county, we know that you received those documents, texts, Facebook posts, whatever they are. The safest way to, for you to make sure they're still part of our system that captures public records is many of you are doing this, is you forward them to Denise. And there's, by the way, there's a way to forward a text by email too. You, I don't, if anybody doesn't know how to do it, I can show you how. But you can take a text and forward it by email to Denise. Anything that you forward to Denise, then you're golden because that means it's captured as part of our public record system. It's captured in our computer system and if anybody does a public records request, it'll show up. In addition, if it's forwarded to Denise, she can disclose it as an ex parte communication, which is another legal obligation that you disclose your communications from the applicant or opponents. So a lot of times people think that ex parte communications are only meetings, but ex parte communications include texts, emails, other forms of communication that are trying to influence your vote. So anybody that's trying to influence your vote by text, email, Facebook post, whatever it is, please forward it to Denise. And then we know that A, it's been captured as a public record and B, it's being, she can put it in the agenda and have it disclosed as an ex parte communication. Most of you are doing that because I, she forwards them to me when you get them too. I'm just saying that sometimes it may not be obvious, especially if it's by a text or a Facebook post or some other odd way of communicating with you. That may not be obvious that you need to forward that to Denise, but you should be forwarding that to Denise as well. So that's kind of the broad overview. I mean, I think most of you all are complying with these rules anyway. I just wanted to make sure that, and, you know, any questions about your obligations?
And if, and if we're doing the reaching out, say we ask an applicant a question or something, we, that, that would be ex parte as well?
That's still ex parte. If you're, if you're contacting the applicant or even a resident on your own initiative.
Right.
And they're responding to you, that's an ex parte communication.
Because you're talking about it.
Yes. And if you did it by text or email, that's also a public record.
Right.
Which again, should be forwarded to Denise. You're always safe if you forward it to Denise. If I have to leave you with, with, with any words of wisdom, I shouldn't say just Denise because it could be an application that Denise is not handling. But if you forward it to Denise or Terry, they'll find the right person to, to get that communication to so that it's adequately disclosed and adequately made part of our public records. So there's a lot of other information here, but I think if you comply with what I just said, you're in good shape.
Okay.
So, do you mind if I say something, David? Just to not clarify something you said, but if you, if the planning commission, and, and the planning commission does a fabulous job at this, I get the item forwarded to me and I don't mind if it's not my item or a zoning item and it's a long-range planning item, I don't mind because what I do is I forward it to the project planner. So I would rather that something not get lost by sending it to all kinds of different people. I, I don't have a problem with being the repository. So as David says, send it to Denise, please do so, even if it's an item that is somebody else's, but that I will certainly be the air traffic controller and send it to that other person, but just please forward it, continue forwarding it to me. So I really appreciate that.
Thank you.
The only other thing I want to clarify is that the sunshine law only applies, and I think I kind of said this, to communications when you all talk to each other. Okay? So if you talk to staff, so there's no sunshine law provision, you can even talk to the members of the Board of County Commissioners individually, not as a group, but as individually, you can contact your commissioner and discuss something that's on the agenda. That's also not a violation of the sunshine law. It's only when you're talking to each other that you have a potential sunshine law violation.
Very good.
Clear? No problem? If any questions, you can email me. Now, the one thing I didn't cover, which is in here, is conflicts of interest, but those are probably better handled on a case-by-case basis because they're really fact-dependent about whether you do or don't have a conflict of interest on a particular matter. So I know that some of you have had conflicts of interest on particular matters. It's better if you just, if you're not sure whether you do, go ahead and email me or call me and then I can tell you whether you do or don't. But it's too hard to cover every potential scenario where you might have a conflict of interest. If you do, there's a form you have to fill out, you have to disclose it and generally you can't vote on that matter if you have a conflict of interest. So many of you have already done that before on particular matters, so I think you know the process. But if you have questions about that, you can let me know.
Very good.
If I, I know, I think I've said this before, but just to clarify that too, you know, there's some people who think, well, I'm representing the school board, so if there's a school board item, I can't vote on it because it's, well, that's not what conflict of interest is talking about.
Right.
It's talking about my personal gain.
Right. It would have to be a special private gain, not a special public gain. That's, that's the key test. So if it's somehow benefiting the school district or detriment to the school district, you don't have a conflict.
Right.
But if it benefits you personally or is a detriment to you personally, then you may have a conflict. Or, you know, if it's somebody who you, that you, that employs you other than the school district.
Right.
If it's a private employer, you could also benefit them or it'd be a detriment to them and then you may also have a conflict.
Yep.
Okay, any questions? There's no excuse for you to screw up now.
Denise has got a lot of air traffic control.
Yes, she does. Thank you, Denise.
But I'd much rather you do it and so would she.
Yeah, that's right.
Yes, because that, you know, for sure, a lot of people get a lot of emails and I, and I'm really, I will tell you, and David could probably vouch for me, I hope, that I'm really diligent at getting all these things out. And I just want to make sure that if there is an ex parte, that it is on the record. So it's very important.
Very good. Do I know further questions? I hear a motion.
I have a question, but I'm not.
Sure, you have a question right now.
Well, understanding the difference when you're examining a request and you're at the initial phase and you know there's more to follow, like swift mud or, you know, in the case of water drainage and so on, it has to be approved. That's a, that's a, an interesting question and.
So the issue would be whether you think it's reasonably foreseeable that something related to that matter would be back on the planning commission agenda. So typically, if a project has already passed the zoning and land use stage, it's probably unlikely that it's going to be back on your agenda. Is it possible? Yes, because there's some, a few matters that end up, you know, if they could appeal something, it could get back to you or there could be a sign variance that could get back to you. But I wouldn't say that's reasonably foreseeable that it could. Now, say you had a project, it's already been through zoning and land use approval, you probably could discuss it, but then if you discover that now they want a sign variance that is going to come back to the planning commission, then you need to say, wait, stop, that one's going to be on our agenda, I can't talk about it anymore. So the test is whether it's reasonably foreseeable that it would be on your agenda. So I think you could generally assume that if it's been through zoning and land use, it's probably not going to come back to you. But if you acknowledge that it will come back to you, then you need to say, stop, I can't talk about it anymore. Does that make, is that clear enough?
Yeah, that helps, yes.
But if something hasn't been through zoning and land use, pretty good chance it's coming to you.
Right.
So that's a pretty good indicator you shouldn't be talking about it except for on this.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah. That's good. Any other questions? You know, I think one of the things that sometimes that we bleed over into is things that are really beyond the use of the property or the zoning, you know, because we tend to want to look at the whole picture. And a lot of those things are divided, decided after. You know, we either recommend approval or denial. And, you know, I just try to, for me, I just try to think, is this an appropriate use of the property? You know, sort of forgetting about, you know, is it going to work in terms of, you know, flooding and sewer and all those kind of things? But overall, is it appropriate? Would I want it in my neighborhood? Would I think it would be a benefit to the county? And, you know, and if, depends on how I can answer those questions is, you know, how I decide. Because I know there's other people, they're going to see it. You know, it's going to go to staff and they're going to decide things like, you know, as far as approving a development plan, we don't have anything to do with that.
The one, yeah, well, the only qualifier I would make to that is that, yes, your primary mission is to decide land use and zoning, but as you just saw, a lot of the criteria that you evaluate for a rezoning or land use change are looking at some of those kind of after-the-fact issues like drainage, roadways, water and sewers. So I don't think, I think those are all fair discussion points. If you feel that you want to know some of those things to be able to evaluate those criteria, you can ask those questions.
Well, I appreciate that Jamie brought it up in her last discussion.
Yeah, because they're part of your criteria. So if you have questions about whether something meets those criteria, you have every right to ask those questions, even if they're not, even if there's something that the county would typically evaluate as a plan approval. And that's why Mr. Tippin's here. He's the one, when you have those kinds of questions. Or Will Poone on, you know, who's, you know, they're typically reviewing things at the site plan stage and sometimes those questions come up and so that's why they're here to answer those questions.
Very good. I'll, I'll eliminate it. Anything, Pete? What do you think, Jarn? Is that a motion?
You have it.
Not in his head.
He made a motion. Do we have a second? All favor, we're out of here, okay?
I want to be the motion guy.
There we go.
A motion to Jarn.
Okay, we're done.